Good evening, I'd like to call to order our December meeting of the Elizabethan Board of Education, early Merry Christmas to everyone. If everyone would please stand, Mr. Alexander's going to lead us in the pledge of flag and moment of silence.
As a pause for moment of silence, I ask you to think of Mr. John Day, his dad, who is very, very sick. A lot of y'all remember Dr. Day at ETSU. Also Ms. Dee Bradshaw, who's an EHS cook, who is very, very serious. Thank you.
(inaudible) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Tonight's a very, this has been a very cool last few weeks. I hope everybody was at the groundbreaking not long ago. I can honestly say that probably is one of the best days that we've ever had in Elizabethan. There was a spirit and an energy there that I wish we could have bottled. And so tonight, we want to recognize some people, so I'm going to make my way down there. And what, we're going to be doing several recognitions, and what I would say, ask everybody, after we finish them, I'll give everybody a chance to sneak out. You're welcome to stay, but we'll have a time where I'll let everybody scoot out. So, I'm going to make my way down that way. We recognize the fact that, we're very thankful for the city for helping us with the bond, but we also know that we would not be here without generosity of a lot of people. And so, I want to start, and we're going to present you with a plaque, and then stay put, and we're going to do a picture. So, the first one says, "In appreciation to Mr. Joe LaPorte III and the LaPorte Foundation for the continual support for years and financial backing for the construction on the Citizens Bank Stadium, Elizabethan Board of Education 2014." The second one is, "In appreciation for Mr. Robert T. Brad Summers for his significant in-kind contribution for the construction of the Citizens Bank Stadium."
He could not come, and Kenny Carter said that he had another commitment.
Well, we very much appreciate Mr. Summers. And next, "In appreciation to Mr. Jason Witten, number 82 Dallas Cowboys, and Elizabethan's own All-Pro NFL player for his continual financial support and his exemplary character example for the youth of this country." And Coach, you'll come up. And next, "In appreciation to Mr. Richard Barker for his financial backing through mutual donations for the construction of the Citizens Bank Stadium." And "In appreciation to General Shell Brick Incorporated for significant donations of brick products for the TA Dugger Junior High Athletic Field and the ongoing brick recognition project at the Citizens Bank Stadium at Elizabethan High School."
Scrooge in, folks, please.
If you all don't mind, first of all, I want to say thank you for all the praise you've bestowed upon me for the last several weeks. I promise you, it never gets old, but I kind of like to do my own little recognition at this time. You know, I don't know if people know how involved I was, but I want to start with Mr. Alexander, first of all. Make a long story short, Ed approached me in 2009, and, you know, I never will forget the first meeting Ed. I looked at the plan, I said, "This is a great plan." I said, "I'll be happy." I felt like all three projects were awesome, needed to be done, but I said, "I'm not sure you'll get it done in a recession." But, fast forward to 2012, Ed calls me again, and I will never well forget Ed. Do you remember that meeting? His first comment, his first comment, "Christian, when you get called to central office, I mean, what are you thinking? Either, 'What's your kid done?' or, you know, 'What do they want?' He throws up his hands, 'I'm not asking for money.' He goes, 'I'm asking for your support to help me find a way to make this project work.'" And, you know, in my line of business, after about a month, if a project doesn't get going, it gets cut through the shredder. And Ed, with that, your determination and your unwillingness to accept defeat is the only reason they're moving dirt today. So, thank you so much. And I want to wish you the best. I know you've had many years of service for, to the school system, and thank you for that as well, and I wish you the best in your years of retirement. Also, Richard Testor's not here tonight. Is he? Did Richard come in? I want to, as Rita said, we want to thank the school system for, I mean, the city school, I mean, the city-
Council.
City council, thank you. For providing the 5 million, but special thanks to Richard Testor. He never wavered from supporting the 7.5 million request. And without his support, I'm not sure we would have received the 5 million. Also, Richard Van Haas, Mr. Van Haas. You know, you very kind of give me the credit. I won't go into the long story on my conversations with City Hall, but at the end of the day, we were given a directive to find a way to come up with the money without raising property taxes and without your support, assistance, knowledge, and providing information. I don't know where you got it from, but without your help, it would never have been created. So, thank you so much. And Tom Williams and Brad Summers, Tom, for, you know, even after I told Tom the odds of this project happening and him being paid, he still took my phone calls. So, I appreciate your assistance, and Brad for taking my phone call and stepping up and helping out. And school board, Rita, Phil, and Dr. May. You know, you had a lot of direction on how to spend money and people telling you what to do. After many hours of meeting, I commend you all for never wavering from the two projects of the three had to be completed. And Phil, I know we had several conversations, and I really didn't think it was going to be possible, but because of your unwavering, not only will these two be done, but in the near future, maybe not during your term, but TA Dugger will happen as well. So, I commend you all for the job you did. Congratulations. Again, thank you and Merry Christmas. I appreciate it.
I can't tell you what a pleasure it is to work with somebody, even though he's an ultra-conservative. And he always has something to come back at, you know, things of this nature. But this gentleman, at his own cost, on so many occasions, bailed us out, drew all sorts of renderings and things of this nature, always was supportive, and as Mr. LaPorte said, always in contact. It means so much to have someone who has his expertise and his drive and his sense of humor. I just wrote it, signed a check for him yesterday. That's why he's doing that. No, that's all right. You haven't gotten it yet. Anyway, but folks, let me say that Mr. Williams is a special person who has done multiple projects for our school system. All of them have been great, and we just appreciate him more than words can express.
I'm honoring, I'm honoring our agreement. When Mr. Alexander told me he was going to retire, he made me promise I would not acknowledge his retirement. So, I'm not. I'm not acknowledging his retirement, because if I was, I could list all the things that have been done in his tenure, you know, all the capital projects, all the school improvements, all that stuff. I'm not going to do that, but I have a list if you want them. But I'm not. What I am going to do is, thank you. So, I need some help. Mr. Birchfield, I need you. Dr. May, Mr. Isaac, if you would join me. Matt Cooter sends his regrets. He wanted to be here. We wanted to come up with some way to say thank you. I echo what Mr. LaPorte said. We could not be here without the generosity of our town years ago, voting themselves. I have sent sales packs. We could not be here without the support of you gentlemen and your businesses and your commitment to our school system. Thank you all so much. But, Mr. LaPorte is right. We would not be here without Mr. Alexander. There are so many meetings, and Joe's right, we should have given up a long time ago, but that's just not what we do, and he never, ever does it. And he took all the bullets, big targets, right there, and said at the groundbreaking, "You had to have big shoulders to get this done." So, we're not recognizing your retirement. We're saying thank you for your incredible leadership for the stadium, because now our football program and our soccer program and our band program have a home field. And 40 years later, we get to give that, and we're so honored to get to be a part of that. So, one day in the future, we're looking forward to having a companion to this gift, but for now, please accept this on a, from a grateful board, as we look back at our past and heading into the future. So, we hope that you will enjoy this in your retirement. This was one of the photographs that Ronnie Brookshire did, and he was very excited that we were going to be, this was going to be wherever you decide to put it. But, thank you.
I do very much appreciate this. Didn't anticipate this. Let me just say that very few people are lucky enough to work in one place for 39 years with people that are so driven and hardworking, conscientious, bright people. Two of my students are right here, and one was an athlete of ours, and so I don't intend to leave Elizabethan, and I hope that I can contribute in some way as a citizen. But I do appreciate this very much. Thank you.
If anyone would like to leave, now's your getaway. So, thank you all so much. It's time for citizens to speak in accordance with Board Policy 1.404. Anyone wishing to address the board, please come forward, state your name and your address. We've had one request from Deborah Shell. She would like to speak, so, Skelf, I'm sorry, Shell, Skelf, pardon me. Could you come forward?
I'm glad it's audible. I can be quite loud, but since we have so many here for special events, I want to make sure everyone hears.
Thank you.
Just a moment. Here's a notation. This is from my 15-year-old son. I asked him to compose a break. Because, he said, "Mother, I've never even said any words, no one has ever said it was too much. I've never even spoken." So, it was very awkward for him. Heart wrenching for him to do this, but I, I get on different parts of the story.
I've been approached by many parents, asking why my son is not playing football any longer for the Cyclones. And I just kind of wanted to verbalize it publicly. I didn't know the proper protocol, but I would like to take this opportunity to express my appreciation to you, the board, with much regret, though, to address an issue that's concerning my minor son. He attends an EHS, and he has been totally dedicated to the Cyclone football program for years, and TA Dugger. I've given you a handout, again, with much regret, but you're reading such verbiage. I apologize for that. But again, I did request my son, in his own handwriting, to compose what happened after a JV football game a few weeks ago. He started playing at the age of four and loves and has a great passion for the game of football. He's a wonderful young man. He has great character, and he's a Christian young man. And again, he's not used to abusive language or gestures. And me as a mother, my heart is very, very heavy to stand there and have to say that Mr. Witten verbally, emotionally, and mentally abused my minor son. The only penalty, personal foul, he's ever received in his 12 years of football. I'm well aware that in college and in pro, football inappropriate and very vile language is used. However, that's man on man. This abuse came from a man that I think and sure everyone in the area knows, and has claimed to be a very good role model to our youth at Elizabethan High School. But when Mr. Witten made these comments to my child, and aggressively was poking him in the chest during these comments, I didn't know what to do as a mama. Many parents have approached me, but they're not willing to make a stand. Some of the children do not have parental support, and some of the parents just don't care. Some of the parents expressed to me, they won't speak up out of fear that their child will not be able to play our game. I'm not addressing you tonight out of revenge. I'm not suggesting that any kind of approaching a lawsuit over the board to gain any kind of monetary value at all. I'm not even asking for guidance for our son's future, because we're removing him as of tomorrow from the Elizabethan school program. Our family is going to be relocating, and it's very difficult for my son, because I think everyone in this room knows one of the players or is connected to one. My son's so difficult to leave, because I'm leaving my brothers that I've had for years. But my son's character is more important to me than the football program. I thank you, members, so much for serving the children, for serving the teenagers in our wonderful city of Elizabethan. And I know you do this effortlessly, it seems, but I know it's very tiring, the hours you put in and the decisions that you have to make, and I'm sure that's very difficult. The reason I'm here tonight, I wanted to speak from my heart, because I know that currently there are other players that are hearing this type of language. Fortunately, it's the only incident my son has ever had. But currently, there are players hearing this, and I know in the future, there'll be additional players that will be hearing inappropriate cursing and abusive language. So, members, I'm asking you to follow school policies and enforce them, whatever they may be. I'm not sure, don't know the policy on such an incident. But more than that, I'm begging you to follow your heart. From the book of 1st John, "True love knows no fear." I love my son. I love his Elizabethan Cyclone brothers. So, I stand before ye without fear, because I do not fear exposing the truth. And I thank you, and I thank you for your time very much. Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing no one else, we're going to move on. It's time to approve the consent and regular agenda. Can I get a motion to approve? Do you have a second? Thank you. Here we go.
Prior to getting started with the personnel report, let me say, first of all, that you see the 20 by 30 enlargements of the groundbreaking, and only easels there, but in the words of John Hutchins and Don Knotts, there's just one word for the groundbreaking. What is that, Mr.?
Big.
It's big. It's big, and that was a very pleasant experience, and for all of us, I believe, as our chair said. Also, there's the rendering of the cheerleaders and the band, one of which we've given special to Mr. Isaacs, who started, is a cheerleader. There are three shovels here, I think, Ms. Peters and Mr. Isaacs and Mr. Fleming did not pick up your shovels, and we want you to take those with you if you so want those.
You know, you could keep them.
Yeah, you can. You can.
The big heat section.
They have your name on it. They have your name on it. Also, more importantly, I guess, if you'll notice, on your right and my left here, the exemplary district indication from the State Department of Education, even though it came a year and a half late from our State Department, it is an indication that we were, on that year, one of five out of 140 systems in this state academically. And so, we're very proud of that, and we would have had that up had they given us when they should have. Also, the board can look forward to that Tammy Trautman is going to be doing another rendering of y'all. She's using your nude picture here. I didn't say nude, I said nude picture. And that will be, we hope, during the next meeting. So, she'll have that ready to go, and I'll bring it in then. So, also, as we move along here, folks, let's go ahead and do our update. First of all, resignations. Lauren Shifley, EHS teacher, effective 11/25. Transfer Forrest Holt from TA Dugger teacher to EHS teacher, effective 12/1. Kristy Deals, Deals, from Westside Lushroom Monitor to Westside interim part-time assistant to the teacher. Next, leave of absence, Deanne Bradshaw, EHS cook, from 11/17 to 1/30/15. Wendy F. Wright, EHS LPN, from 12/17 to 1/30/15. Chelsea Abrams, Westside assistant to the teacher, from 1/5 through 4/24/15. Eric Womper, Hare McCormick interim principal, from 2/5 to 2/6/15. Also, new hires, Dylan Whittington, interim elementary music teacher, effective 1/5. Corey McPherson, TA Dugger part-time physical education teacher, effective 1/5. Substitute teachers, Melissa Alley, effective 12/10. Thomas Pleasant, effective 12/10.
Anybody else have any reports or anything before we move on?
Ms. Miller, we need a vote on the consent.
Yes, we do. Man, I was just thinking up. No, sometimes you have to. There's been so many fun things going on. I'm just kind of in another world. All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed, and please forgive me. And those came in these three seconds.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
I would like to say, first of all, congratulate our finance department for doing such a great job. And they are, like Mr. Williams, very conservative and have a lot of character, Mrs. Wilson. Any questions you have specifically? I think Mr. Fleming had one that he was asking in reference to the audit, but there are no true findings in it. But, Ms. Wilson, do you want to address anything, or do you have, does the board have a question for Mrs. Wilson?
You answered my questions about the administrative procedures to handle not deficiencies, but some inaccuracies that were in there, but some things that need to be addressed. But you said they're addressed administratively, and that's why I would expect it. Now, I commend Ms. Wilson, you for this report, both reports. It's pretty amazing to see the school system get checked off, as you have. Lot of good financial practices at voice.
And the auditors are tough.
I've used this firm, I know.
You know that they lead no standard, so I don't care.
Anybody have a question? All right. Item on the floor is to approve Blackburn Children's Stagall PLC Independent Auditor's Report of Elizabethan Board of Education Internal School Funds Regulatory Basis, Elizabethan High School, TA Duggar, Eastside, Harlem McCormick, and Westside, for the physical year ended June 30th, 2014. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next one, approve Blackburn Children's Stagall PLC Independent Auditor's Report, Elizabethan City Schools, a component unit of the City of Elizabethan, Tennessee, financial statements and supplemental information for the physical year ended June 30th, 2014. Can I get a motion to approve?
No.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
All right. Anybody have any questions or comments on this one?
Yes, I do. Okay. I've done more math in the past three days than I've done since college, but I agree with Mr. Fleming that it's, they're wonderful reports. I have two questions on page four, on one of the bullet items. It lists the new athletic fields at Duggar that were completed. Do you have the final figures on what those cost, those ballfields at TAD Duggar?
Okay. In 2012, the initial bid was $385,000. Do you know if it came in about 385 or?
That was the initial bid, was 385. And I know, since that time, there were some additions and addendums and changes in that project, and there were some donations from General Schell to do dugouts and different things like that, that are part of our depreciable cost of the project that were not actually spent. But I have that in my office, I just don't have that with me.
What happened to the drainage system? Did they ever go ahead and, I know that was going to be cut, did that ever go forward?
On the site, there is, of course, general drainage in place, but what was in the original design was a pretty elaborate infield drainage system that, to my knowledge, I don't think there's any field around here. I'm not even sure the Twins field has that drainage system either. So it was just cost prohibitive to do that, so that was not added back to the project. No, ma'am.
Because I remember being at that meeting when that was talked about, and I wondered if you'd added that.
No, ma'am.
Okay.
We would love to have done that, though, because it would have made the field playable much quicker after, after inclement weather, but.
Thank you. The only other one I had was on page 10, down at the bottom, under net position, there is a line called rejected, excuse me, restricted for athletic complex, $4,901,923. But I don't see any restricted funds for the band room and the six new classrooms. Is that included in this, or is that a separate item?
That is all included together. That is just the way the auditor presented that. But that is the bond fund from the City of Elizabethan for both projects. They are both included in that.
So even though it just says athletic complex, that means the band room and the classrooms as well?
That is the entire EHS capital program.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
Thank you very much.
Do you know if you have anything? Item on the floor is to approve Blackburn Children's Stagall PLC Independent Auditor's Report, Elizabethan City Schools, a component unit of the City of Elizabethan, Tennessee, financial statements and supplemental information for the physical year ended June 30th, 2014. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next one, approve Blackburn Children's Stagall PLC Independent Auditor's Report, Elizabethan City Schools, a component unit of the City of Elizabethan, Tennessee, financial statements and supplemental information for the physical year ended June 30th, 2014. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Ms. Miller, can I ask a quick question? Is there, what's the reason that we do two separate reports? And we, I know, I understand the breakdown of the school versus the breakdown of the central office. Is that what's required by law?
Yes. Okay, I just was curious. Excuse me.
Oh, no. Good question. Next item is approve sending letter of support to City of Elizabethan to Mr. Jerome Kitchens and Mayor Kurt Alexander regarding application for the Safe Routes to Schools grant. Can I get a motion to approve?
No.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Now, enormous amount of work has been done by Ms. Regina Wilder. If she'll come forward here, she can explain what this project is. Seven to eight years ago, Mr. Hutchins worked on the, what we call the sidewalk project for the city, and it was, in essence, dropped. But some of that information still may be germane, and it will assist Ms. Wilder in this endeavor. But, Ms. Wilder, explain to the board, please, what, how you're working with Mr. Hartman and others to possibly make this grant possible.
Right. This is a state grant. It's originally a federal grant, and it's through the Tennessee Department of Transportation. And we're working with Mr. Kitchens and Mr. Hartman to put up some safety signage on G Street. And we have looked at four different intersections, three on G and one at H and Holston. So depending on what the state requires from us for the ADA compliance from the safety signage to the schools, because we have to go from G Street to the school, that's going to limit how many intersections that we're able to focus on. And so, we're still working with Department of Transportation and UT Knoxville, as well as the city, to determine what's going to be done. But we have to have an open hearing on that before we send in the grant, and the grant's due January 15th. And so, we're requesting a letter of support from the school system to the city, because the city is our lead agency that applies for the grant.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Keep us updated. Yeah, that would be great. That would be great. All right. Item on the floor is to approve sending letter of support to City of Elizabethan, Mr. Jerome Kitchens, and Mayor Kurt Alexander regarding application for Safe Routes to Schools grants. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next is to approve the waiving of the 30-day resignation notice requirement per Board Policy 5.204 and TCA 49-5-508 for the following individual, Lauren Shipley. Can I get a motion to approve?
No.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
This is a request to be complied, of course, as it indicates here with state law and board policy, when a person who is in certified position wants to resign. And in order, and I allowed her to do that, and I ask that you ratify that now.
Please.
Any questions, comments? Item on the floor, approve the waiving of the 30-day resignation notice requirement per Board Policy 5.204 and TCA 49-5-508 for the following individual, Lauren Shipley. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the discussion and hopefully recommendation of interim director of schools. So let's start discussing, and then when we feel ready, we can make a motion and hopefully get this in place, so that we can start the permanent search soon. Who wants to get us started? Ms. Perkins, did anyone else internally apply for this position?
We have two internal applications, one outside. The two internal applications met the requirements of the posting. The external application did not. That person does not hold a valid current Tennessee license.
How do you post, Ms. Perkins? Is that, was that locally or?
We post, no, sir. We put it on our website. We mail out to various higher education institutions in the area, and we post in all the schools. We mail to the state employment agencies as well. And we also send a mailing out to certain individuals in the community to notify them of the openings, in hoping that if they may have a contact that we aren't aware of, to increase our search, to make it more ethically appealing as well.
I didn't see the posting. There was no timing on the posting, was there? I mean, effective date, but not the end date.
Yes, sir. Yes, there was. We posted it on the 5th of December. We post our professional positions for 10 days, so that makes it up today.
I'm sorry, my question wasn't clear. With the, with the actual interim, there's not, I mean, it begins on this date, but there's not an ending date to present.
No, sir. That would be determined by the board, when you select the permanent person. Typically, what we have done in the past is that the interim serves until you put a permanent person in that position. And that can be, you know, six weeks, it could be three months.
Two and a half years. It could be two and a half years, if that's what. How would you know that?
I wasn't going to mention that.
I would just like to get a clarification. There's had been some discussion, and we received the document from you that was drawn up by Shields and his folks. And I think that was a recommendation, and part of that recommendation, if I understand it correctly, was whoever the interim person is would not be eligible to apply for the permanent position. I'm thinking that's just a recommendation, that's not a policy or something that is set in stone.
One of the things I would recommend that everybody do, take that document and get a highlighter, and highlight requirements in one color and recommendations in the other. Because you're exactly right, there are things that they suggest. If you will look at our board policy, Board Policy 5.801, it says, "The interim director of schools appointed during the time of the search shall not become a candidate unless the board expressly permits such inclusion in the selection procedures." So if we wanted to, you know, like when, the last time we did superintendent search, the interim had the opportunity to apply, and a lot of places do that. So that is completely up to us. We, and basically, what we would decide in January, as far as the wording, is just that we would have to let them know that the interim would be applying for the position, and that's just fair for everyone else. So that is completely up to us.
And that recommendation was made through an attorney?
It was. Our attorney, Shield, Mr. Shields, their organization, one of the attorneys, put something together for school systems that were going to do their own search. And they put together, and it's a wonderful how-to-do-it document. It talks about things you have to do, and then recommendations for them. And there's pros and cons about having your interim, you know, be able to apply for the position, and I think it just depends on which way you fall on it. It does give, unless that person kind of decides they really even want to do it, let the board figure out if this is going to be something that will work. They still have to apply like everyone else. We, when we did the previous superintendent search, you know, everything was open to the community, it was very transparent. We asked the same questions to every candidate. So it's just kind of.
Ms. Perkins, there's two internal, we only have two applications to review. Is that correct? Can you give us the names of the two people?
That would be Mr. Richard Van Hus and Dr. Corey Gardenour.
Okay. And that's who I had reviewed their file and thought that was, you know, what we were talking about, wanted to just make sure everybody that's here was aware of what we're talking about. The external one I did review is application when I came by earlier to the central office here, and it wasn't thoroughly complete. I did a very cursory background check and did not find that we had enough information to discuss, or at least I don't feel that I have enough information at this point. We would have, I would have to delay, I can only speak for me, any decisions if we wanted to look at any other candidates, but it doesn't sound as if they're eligible by virtue of not having a license. This is on a short, I need to have this position filled on a short term. So if we can just go to the next part of that discussion, I want to share what I know with my colleagues, so you can make decisions as well.
Dr. May, just so that you'll know about your timeline, right now, the State Department of Education is processing applications that they received in early November to have their first look for issuing licenses. So they're, that's sort of how far behind they are right now on issuing.
Okay. So, you know, in my mind, I'm just kind of thinking out loud, since we're here, discussion rather than an action item, and kind of bouncing a few things off. I did call the State of Tennessee and found that there is no law that would preclude us from using ours, our TSBA representative, and did find there's no law precluding us from doing the interim role. But our policy has the force of law, and if we have it in our policy, we'll need to rescind the policy or state it up front as it's stated in the policy. So as long as we do that. So having that discussion, I spoke earlier with Mr. Van Hus, and he may want to address this issue, but his interest in doing this was to help. He does not desire the long-term role. When I've spoken with Dr. Gardenour in the past, he would like to be considered, at least today, a candidate for that role. So the concern is whether or not we would like to have Dr. Gardenour or Dr. Van Hus, one of those two individuals, or neither, I guess is the other option. So as I think through this, one of the, one of the thoughts would be, if Mr. Van Hus is willing and would like to do it, that would alleviate the policy. However, the constraints of our policy without making any upfront notifications. On the other hand, as you think through the possibilities, having your interim be someone whom might roll into that, you can't get a better interview than having them serve on the job and see how they do, how their performance is in a short term. I know that having organizational knowledge, I think, is very important, especially in the mid-year transition, to have someone who already knows where we are. They won't have a lot of time to get up to speed on the organizational knowledge. In my discussions with Mr. Alexander, and you can correct me if any of you that I'm naming you says otherwise, but I feel that there's confidence in both candidates. So that's what I know to this point, and see if any of you have any other ideas about those.
I appreciate your comments, and I appreciate your research and clarifying as far as the interim, being able to proceed and take on the full-time position. Something that we might want to consider, you know, this is probably one of the biggest single play items that us as a board will take on here. And I'm thinking, you know, if we don't take any action tonight, I think we still have a very capable assistant superintendent in Mr. Van Hus, who I would assume would just automatically fill that role come January the 5th in the absence of our superintendent. I don't know if that would be the case. If he's the assistant superintendent, then would he take on that role automatically, or?
That was my question as well. When he's, isn't that sort of an automatic thing, or not?
I guess maybe I'm just trying to buy a little time. You know, we don't want to miss a beat. I think we have some very capable people in our central office, and we've got a good thing going, we just want to keep moving forward. I just want to do what's best for the system. Like I say, either one of these two candidates would be perfectly fine to help us move forward. I just want things to be pretty seamless and just kind of keep on rolling forward. But me, too, I'll do some, you know, search and look and make sure that, you know, we're getting the right person.
I did, one other piece of information I forgot to mention, I did check with the pricing for TSBA just by calling. TSBA would be about $5,000 to $8,000, depending on, to do it.
We just want to keep moving forward. I just want to do what's best for the system. Like I say, either one of these two candidates would be perfectly fine to help us move forward. I just want things to be pretty seamless and just kind of keep on rolling forward. But me too, I'll do some, you know, search and look and make sure that, you know, we're getting the right person.
I did, one other piece of information I forgot to mention, I did check with the pricing for TSBA just by calling. TSBA would be about $5,000 to $8,000, depending on, to do a director search through the TSBA. Unfortunately, what I found out on a national search that's outside of their selected area, which is much more concise, it's not a national search firm, is running on the order of $40,000 to $50,000 on the low end. Large school systems like Hamilton County, where you've got 30,000 kids in there and a much higher budget are typically who use those, at least what I understand, the larger searches. We can internally search it and cast our net as wide as we would like, or we can expend that level of money if the board desires. I personally have a lot of reservation about expending that kind of money when we have the expertise, at least, I think, within the TSBA net, if not locally. Secondly, as far as the, I think that our policy says when there is a vacancy, we have to fill it, so we'll be, I don't think it says how long we have. So, I'm not positive what the board policy and role is, but we have an obligation once the vacancy is there. We've been given notice for the purpose of making sure that that role is filled, and I think being, we would be weakened if we don't have somebody in that role as a system to be able to move the way we need to when things come up. There needs to be a clear chain of command, I believe.
And our next board meeting is not until after the 5th.
We can call a meeting though.
But we can call a meeting beforehand. I've worked in both situations, with an interim, taking the superintendent's role, and also an interim that just served an interim basis, and someone else taking, and both work well. And there's advantages to the interim, and there's disadvantages to the interim. So, it's not a, to me, it's not a cut-and-dried, automatic, that it's going to happen, you know, that the interim's going to automatically become superintendent. So, I'm comfortable with either candidate. I'm comfortable with assuming whether we need to move forward with making a clarification that the assistant superintendent becomes a superintendent until an interim is named. I'm comfortable with that arrangement as well.
Well, I do know that, you know, irregardless, there's going to be a void of some sort, no matter who steps up into this interim role, because they both are very busy gentlemen, there will be a void. And the folks that I've talked to, they assured me that, you know, they work as a committee up here a lot under Mr. Alexander's direction. I think they all pitch in and help one another out. I don't see that being a real problem with either candidate, simply for the fact that they work well as a team up here, and I think they could support each other and support their roles that they currently have, plus the responsibilities that they would be taking on, so. And I appreciate the fact that y'all do work together and, you know, keep the system moving forward, because it's going to be a pretty good void, folks. Whether y'all realize it or not, you know, it's going to be, it's going to be a big void.
There's three people. You're going to go to two people.
Yeah.
Which means the work of three will be done by two. Now, the second question, I guess, in follow-up is, between the two of them, I'm not sure who has more duties on their plate. They would probably both say they both do, so I don't.
One of the things, I came up at lunch and had a chat with Mr. Van Huss and Dr. Gardenour. You know, the really, really neat thing and conversation was that both of them were looking out for each other. Mr. Van Huss doesn't want, they want to, they're very supportive of each other, which was, you don't always get that. And, you know, they were both very quick to point out that whomever steps into this role, the other folks will step up, in reference to Dr. G., I'm sorry, Dr. Gardenour, it's such a habit to call you Dr. G. You know, because he heads up special education and so many other things. We're very fortunate that Mr. Van Huss, Mr. Pluss, and Mr. Hutchins have all had previous principals' experience, so they are, they're very comfortable stepping in and working with the special education side of things. Mr. Van Huss wears a multitude of hats. He is kind of the point man for the stadium project. And you're right, both of them have a ton of work. And I think what we just have to decide is if, you know, we want to just stay with someone who would just step in as interim, do the job, and then step aside when we name it, or if we allow someone internally to kind of try it out. And it would be, I have worked with both of these guys for eight years, so I feel, I know them very well and worked with them very well. But this would be an opportunity for you, who don't know maybe Dr. Gardenour very well, to have that working relationship. And it really, it's a win-win. We're very fortunate, there is not a bad way this is going to go. But I do think it's really important that we name someone tonight, because I think the school system and our teachers need to know that when, when Mr. Alexander goes to support his grandchildren at, to the level that he is planning on doing, that everything here is just going to continue on. And I think that is, is very important, that we have that in place, just to keep everybody feeling that.
And I feel that way for the teachers. They need to know who is in charge.
Yep.
The staff, not just the teachers.
Oh, that's, I wasn't clear on that. That was who I was talking about, is the teachers.
They need to know who to, where does the buck stop, in a sense. And I feel like if there's ambiguity there, it's going to make it difficult. And we've got issues, we've been, you know, issues have been raised this evening that don't need to be dealt with, and those things have got to have somebody to be the point person coming in January, so.
Well, I also think, I mean, this, I'd like for this process to be over in two months, but reality says it may not be, and we may need to think about, we may need to have an interim assistant superintendent or interim special ed director that comes from within the system or comes through an application process, because we could well be into, and that's something we can discuss in our meetings forward.
And that's probably what we need to do, and when we have a workshop in January, that'll give us an opportunity to look at a timeframe and, but yeah. Ms. Peters, you had something else?
Yes. This may be getting a little ahead of ourselves, but when it comes time to look for a permanent superintendent, the committee that does that, how is that...
Well, that's what we'll decide at the workshop, because we have several options.
Okay.
And so, we do have quite a bit of leeway, and believe me, we're going to have, want to have a long discussion about that, so.
Yes, absolutely.
As a citizen, may I comment on this?
You like that, don't you?
Yes, I like that.
I can tell.
Twenty-five years as administrator, I know how important stability is at the classroom level. And once, several of y'all said they need to know what is happening, and it was certainly helpful, it's someone whom they know and whom they trust. And both those people can be in that respect. But also, if you decide to go, should you consider Dr. Gardenour in the long run? You'd have time to observe him, whatever you decide. But again, as that citizen, I believe that our, the administrators at our schools and the teachers in their schools are doing a tremendous job. And I would hate for them to feel like they were being jerked around or not considered in a situation like that. So, I mean, thank you for letting me say that.
I don't have a direct question for either of you, but if either of you would like to speak, I would love to hear if you had anything that you would like us to know as we think through that decision process, or, thank you.
Mr. Van Huss is also a coach, by the way, and they're playing right now. If that's, if, that's why he's a little twitching a little bit.
I don't guess it's very often that you come before a board asking them to consider someone else, but from my standpoint, I would first like to say that the entire administrative team here works so well together. There's not any egos involved here whatsoever, and I can assure you that, you know, I know Dr. Gardenour, he knows me, there's zero dissension here. So, whichever decision you make, both of us are going to, you know, fall right in line and move on. You know, again, what I would, I guess, ask you to consider is, if you think that Dr. Gardenour may be a candidate for you to strongly consider, I would ask you maybe to consider giving him that opportunity as the interim, to, you know, maybe, maybe you like him, maybe you don't. You know, but it's going to give you a chance to see exactly, you know, how he would operate. So, that's all I would say. Again, he and our friends, we're coworkers, and again, the entire administrative team, I don't want to speak for them, but I guess I probably am. We, you know, would, would like to see him get that opportunity, if you so choose to go that route.
Appreciate your candor.
Would it be in order to make a motion? I'm sorry, Mr. Gardenour, go ahead. Sorry, you go ahead. No, you go ahead.
No, you're too late now. We want to hear what you had to say.
I'll just say, I'm humbled by that statement. We do have, as Mr. Alexander said, an amazing group of people here, teachers, administrators, and we have a great board. So, I think that we are in a position to move forward. I think that, as Mr. Van Huss said, we all get along, just, not just by the fact that we are friends, but we also work together, we make decisions together, we make mistakes together, but we're together. So, I appreciate any consideration for he or I. I think both would do a good job, but I appreciate that. I'm humbled.
Thank you.
Is it time to make a motion?
That's my question.
Yeah, I don't know if you want to go. Yeah, and I agree, and I appreciate the openness of the board and candidates, and I guess at this point, I would like to make the motion that we make Dr. Gardenour interim superintendent with the stipulation that he does have the opportunity to apply for the permanent position when that time becomes available.
All right. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Item on the floor is to appoint Dr. Cory Gardenour as interim superintendent and allowing him to apply for the position, which we will make known in the, as we're making that, I just lost my complete train of thought. We make that statement available as we're doing the superintendent search. Mrs. Perkins, would you call a roll?
Can we?
Oh.
Question?
Yeah.
Clarification, we're not in any policy violation, right?
No, we aren't.
Our policy is very clear that we can go either route.
Yes, we can.
Well, I commend both candidates. There, I'll echo what everyone said earlier. In working very closely with these gentlemen over the last couple of months, I'm very impressed with this entire staff, and I commend both of them for being interested in taking this on, and I hate we have to even make a decision.
I know.
Two, two fine men, as the entire staff is.
We're kind of lucky, aren't we? Somebody did a pretty good job cleaning the staff again.
Excuse me.
Can I make an amendment to that motion, that it be effective January the 5th, whenever, at midnight, whatever time you are out of here?
And he better stay till midnight.
You mean when there's a Mr. Alexander sized hole in the door, as he, you know, makes a run for it?
I just want to make sure there's no lack of clarity for the fact when this takes effect.
Perfect. Thank you. Anybody else?
I want to make sure that he makes all the calls on these snow, snow days. That's all I got to say. He needn't call me.
Oh, can we have a second to Dr. May's amendment?
That was a motion to amend.
That we had, yes.
Okay.
Okay. All of those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Anything else?
We're ready for the roll call.
Yeah, that was just the amendment. Now, we're going to vote on the motion.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Mr. Fleming?
Aye.
Mr. Isaac?
Aye.
Dr. May?
Aye.
Ms. Peters?
Aye.
Ms. Bullock?
Aye. Congratulations. And Mr. Van Huss is the happiest guy in the room. What I would like to ask the board is, as quickly as possible, if you would give Mrs. Perkins some dates for a January workshop for our director search, also time of day, that would be incredibly helpful. We'll try to limit those to an hour, if we wanted to do a working lunch, or if, and a lot of, I know it's going to be dependent on your schedule, but if we can get those out as quickly as possible, which means don't walk out of here and then not give it another thought, so actually stick it in your brain and check your calendars. I've never wanted to not adjourn a meeting more than this one, because this makes me very sad. Anybody want to say anything?
I would like to make a quick comment before we adjourn. I'd just like to publicly thank Mr. Alexander for all his years of service, not only as a teacher, a principal, but also as administrator and the super job he's done as a superintendent. I'd just like to bring up one fond memory, if I may, real quickly. Several years ago, I had an appointment with Mr. Alexander to high school to talk about some lighting or something that was going on there to high school, there on behalf of the electric system. And he was running a little bit late for his appointment, showing up out there in the field where we were discussing. He comes running up there, and he basically just brings, he said, "I'm very, very sorry", he said, "But I had a fight between two young ladies, and I like to never got it tore apart." And that was a fond memory that I can remember.
So, when you win that fight.
But Mr. Alexander, we certainly appreciate, and hope you enjoy your retirement and get to spend a lot of time with your family and your grandchildren.
Thank you.
If I could say something as well, I've known Mr. Alexander for many years, and we heard the accolades from Joe Leport tonight, which are very serious, and I commend him for the financial end of the system and where we've grown, but that sign of theirs is probably the most important thing that I feel he can ever do, making first for students and really turning this system into, not that it wasn't always first, right?
The teachers did that, Mr. Fleming.
But it's a great job that you've done in your leadership. We thank you and commend you.
I also want to echo the same sentiments. You know, we go back to the days of Pearl Harbor Day, if I recall. I hated Pearl Harbor Day. He always dropped a pop quiz on me. And when I was considering my run for this board position, he told me that you will be the conscience of the conscience of the school board, of the school system. The school board members are collectively the conscience of the school. And I think that, you know, we, we need to function that role, and I appreciate that he gave me that guidance. I've gone back to that many times as we try to think through that. And I know anyone in a position of leadership will frequently be a lightning rod for controversy, but I've seen you always do what your heart felt was best for this system, and it's turned out well. We have an exemplary district, and we continue to see positive strides. I saw these financial reports come across when they were released, and I see this every year, and have taken it for granted as to the fact that they're always flawless. And I know you're going to say Ms. Wilson does that, and she does. But the fact of the matter is, you've assembled a team, and you've led them, as a good leader would, in a way that, we have a team where the teachers perform well, and we have a team where our students are now able to perform well, our athletic teams, our band, our musical, our arts, we have fine arts, we have sciences, we're doing great. And it's going to be hard for the next director. Sorry, if you are wanting to do that, you've got big shoes to fill, and whomever we ultimately put in that role. But I want to thank you for that. Through the hard times, you've always stuck through it. Thank you.
It's commendable to serve in one district your whole career. Certainly is.
Absolutely.
Well, my role, my, you know, I, I, Mr. Alexander's a teacher at the high school, and thankfully, my children took school, are taking school much more serious than I did. I just enjoyed it, had a good time. And I was never on time for his class, ever. I was always out in the hall talking, usually not to a girl, but I was always talking. And there was one day, I came to class on time, and he walked in, and he goes, "Mrs. Bullock, is everything okay?" I said, "Yeah." Just kind of freaked him out. But Mr. Alexander always made the classroom fun, and was always my favorite teacher. And when he became a superintendent, I thought, well, that's a shame, because the students are missing out on a remarkable teacher. But then I saw all the stuff that he did as a principal, and the students would always dress up like him, and, I mean, nothing speaks more about how much somebody admires you whenever they dress up like you. And then, when I came on the board, my third meeting, we needed a superintendent, and I called him and I asked him if he would be willing to step into that role, and I've sat beside of him or near him for eight years, and I want to miss it terribly. Now, I know how hard it was for Matt Cooter in his last meeting. So, on that, the next regularly scheduled board meeting will be Thursday, January 15, 2015, 6:30 in the Matt Pierce boardroom. We'll let you know when we're going to have a workshop. Mr. Alexander, congratulations. And Merry Christmas. Can I get a motion to approve?